The April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five Foxfire Village Council monthly work session. Any changes to the agenda?
I'd just like to add a brief update on the water department.
Any other changes? And motion to approve the agenda as we handed?
I made a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One B, uh, it's, um, with, um, first up, uh, Councilman Donovan.
Um, one of the things I wanted to talk about, and again, this is really depending on whether or not the budget is there this year. And as we get closer into the budget, we'll know. But as we all know, we did a burn there in the park at the trails, and we did all three loops. And I think you've all been in the trails, have you not? Okay, so the red and the yellow loops have basically been totally cleared. And the one loop that is still, has not been cleared, is the blue loop, which equals seven acres of the fifteen acres. I've explored a couple of different companies in looking into doing a forestry mulching, trimming, and clearing of all of the brush and the trees that should not be in that loop. And just to give you an example, the one company, a couple of companies I talked to do not mulch, which is something that they did not do in the red and yellow loop trails. So that's why you have all those tree branches and tree logs and everything in the loop itself, it looks terrible. So I looked for a company that actually does mulching. And I did find one, and I guess he does a lot of business. Initially, I'm gonna pass this along to give me an example. Now, our loop is much more crowded in terms of our brush that we have than what you see here. This is one of his before pictures. So as you look at the other two, this is what it would look at, and I'm gonna pass him down after he's done mulching, clearing it out. So I would like us to talk about that. Again, it depends on how our budget numbers look.
What's the cost?
Twelve five to do all seven acres.
And did you say you didn't mulch in A and B?
No, when they did that burn, he took out all those trees and everything, they did not mulch any of it.
They, they did, um, they do what foresters typically do, which it needs a lot of debris.
Right.
It's not, it's not a, yeah.
It's not clean, right.
It looks very terrible.
They do, it does, they both look bad.
So he's not gonna do the other, the loops that weren't, it's just the one that we just burned?
Right.
The one that was never.
The C loop, right, which, um, I think of, I think of, I don't know if I brought it with me.
Who's the contractor?
That would be Big Oak Underbrushing. Oh, here, there's some pictures, just saying, um, so this is the, the red and the yellow loops. And this is the C loop, which is the seven acres. So the other two loops equate to six acres. And I think I showed you this when we were doing the burn, but I can pass that back.
I think that's the contractor that did our van move down for last year.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't know if you've ever been up in Seven Lakes, um, do you know where the vet is? The vet's office is up there, and there's that church up there. Um, as you're turning into Seven Lakes. Okay, if you go in the back, the, the church owns that back portion, that playground back there. And I saw it before Big Oak's cleaning it out, and it was as bad as our C loop. And you should see it now, it looks like the clear pictures, it was amazing what they did, I was really impressed. So I'd like to consider it if we have enough money in the budget for doing it and then.
Oh, we're talking this fiscal or next fiscal?
Next, next. So that's all I have, I just want.
Can I ask a question, if we do C and we didn't do A and B, is that gonna make A and B look even worse?
Well, A and B is a few years old now, it's about five years old now.
Yeah, um, we could always schedule it for another year. Yeah, I could do it, it's pretty, I mean, it's pretty empty, that way you think that, it's very empty.
Yeah.
Um, I would rather schedule that later.
And so if we do it, is that a one-time shot? Okay.
Well, especially if we're gonna continue burning, I mean, cause that keeps the underbrush down. Correct, but it would really clean it up and make it look nice. And, um, I've seen a couple of things that he's done, and it's very, he does a good job. So again, I'd like to consider it for next fiscal year and.
For the budget, we're working on that.
Correct, yeah. But I just wanted to give a heads up, so if, again, let's look at the numbers first, and then if we have some money. I told him it wouldn't happen until our next fiscal year if we were gonna move forward with it, and he's willing to hold the price. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Next, um, the agenda is Foxfire Boulevard, and I have an update to the parking situation on there. Um, we had sent out a, a letter to all the owners of the properties on Foxfire Boulevard where the condos are, stating that we were going to change the, the parking situation on that, in that area. And, um, there've come, there, a lot of questions have come up about, about that situation. So at this point, we still have people doing research for us on, um, what can and can't be done, what we can do, um, working with the HOA or with the property owners. But at this point, we will be doing nothing with this parking situation until we get some firm answers. Once that is determined, what I'd like to propose is that we update our ordinances with language specific to this area, so that we, we're all on the same page, and we don't have to revisit this situation in the future. So that's where that stands right now.
Uh, we have in the meeting at six o'clock, or is it canceled?
Um, um, the six o'clock meeting has not been canceled. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that.
Okay.
Any questions for me from the council?
The only thing, uh, what maybe I can add is that, you know, we don't have really a plan for that area. I mean, you know, we talked about restricting the parking and stuff like that. But it seems with, you know, if there is a change in the ownership of the golf courses, it seems like council may wanna give those folks, sit down and see, just put together a plan, what, a vision, what we want that area to look like. And then part of, that, that, part of the issue, again, that would be incorporated in the end of the plan, rather than just.
Private property? Pardon? The golf course is in private property, that's the first.
Right, but I think because it's the entrance to the golf course, if, if we have a, a vision for what we want that area to look like, it seems like we wanna have them also involved in.
Well, we said we were going to do that, I mean, this was going to be.
But it's like if you have plans, maybe really a concrete plan sitting in writing, seeing what's gonna happen to that area.
Well, we don't, we don't know at this point, we don't, we.
Yeah.
Is, is anybody on the board looking after, they interested?
I'm, I'm sorry, we don't, we don't take public comment right now, we can have public comment at the end of the meeting.
Which is something to think about.
No, we did, we did say that, we were going to put a plan together. And then we're.
We should really be talking about this at, at the call.
Yeah.
During that conference discussion.
So.
Okay.
But that's where we are, so that project is on hold.
Alright.
Okay. Moving on, the next item on the budget is the, sorry, the budget. Next item on the agenda is the budget.
Okay, so what I would like to do, um, is figure out tonight when we wanna set our public hearing for, so that Lisa has plenty of time. And then also, um, at least one special work session to go over the budget, based on the outcome of that session. We either call, we either have another one, or we don't. We've got some stuff hanging out, um, one is the Central Pines Review of Salary, that's kind of a big one. We'll keep health insurance through the end of the year, but then we're gonna have to switch, right? I mean, we're doing the First Carolina Care through thirty first of December.
Were you gonna do it on the fiscal year or the calendar year?
No, because Lisa made a good point, if you're with First Carolina Care and you've already paid your deductible for this year, we do not wanna be switching.
Yeah, yeah.
So we've got some things, we kinda got a hammer through, um, county has another special work session on budget on Wednesday. I'm gonna go at least to hear the fire department part, um, did you ever been approached by the fire department, have you? No, nothing. So we've got some, I don't wanna say sticky wickets, but we've got some sticky wickets we gotta get through, so, um, I would like to do a, a special work session or dedicate, wait a minute, what is this, April? Go on, wait that long, I think we need a special work session, maybe the early part of May is dedicated to that. And it doesn't matter too much to me, um, Tuesdays are good, I'll flip off of work if I have to. Fridays are good, kinda depends upon, I'm thinking maybe somewhere the week of the fifth.
That Tuesday is not good for me, but Thursday's fine for me.
Okay, you wanna do a Thursday afternoon?
What time afternoon?
Uh, two thirty.
How do you do?
Going, going, going.
You're talking about May first?
No, I'm talking about May eighth, yeah, yeah.
Two thirty?
Yeah.
And then we're gonna kinda look.
Two thirty.
Finalize.
I care, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but we're gonna, you might be able to, so if we do the two thirty, that might be good.
He gets it, his budget, he gets it done.
Yeah, yeah. Does that work for everybody?
Yes, yes.
Plan maybe from two thirty to five or something like that? And if we can roll through it before then, that'd be great. And I will have a copy of the rough budget to you before then.
Okay, good.
Okay, as much rough as we can, we can get it filled out, okay? And then, um, based on how that one goes, we can decide whether we need to pull another one, if that works, right?
Yep.
Okay, and then for the public hearing, the county intends to do their, um, budget approval on the third June, which is kinda early, but that's good. Um, I'm kinda leaning toward, um, only because it depends upon how much work we still think we have to do after we do the May eighth special work session. I would gladly do the public hearing somewhere the week of, hold on a second. Whoa, stop, somewhere the week of June twenty third.
But do, do we, well, Lisa, you have Lisa's dates here, right? Is there a reason we don't wanna just do the tenth, have the, have it on the tenth?
Well, if we, as long as it's completely, as long as we're completely done, like we've negotiated with the fire department, all that kinda stuff is done. How about the seventeenth?
You know what, I gotta confirm something, I, I may not confirm.
And if we don't wanna decide that tonight.
No.
We don't have to, but we do need to be sure we give Lisa enough time to get advertised.
We need to officially call it, call the public hearing.
Right, now, you have on here, you've got June tenth or June twenty sixth, you don't have the.
I just gave those, because in the past, you've always.
Done the, with the work, with the meetings.
During the meeting and, and there's been times where the work session too, those were just those two leading dates that went between the month.
But you wouldn't be opposed to the seventeenth?
No, no.
Okay, we could do any date in the middle.
Okay.
And we don't have to decide that tonight if we don't want to, but we don't wanna let it linger, because we need to be sure Lisa has time to advertise.
Right, and you need to tell them?
Well, probably once, and I've got no more than twenty five days, no less than ten, so I've got two consecutive weeks, so it's a three with the Wednesday and Sunday, so I'm limited on when I can run my ads, but the seventeenth would work. The first ad will be the fourth, and the, excuse me, the second ad will be the fourth of June. And the first ad would be, you know, it would have to be in twenty eighth of May.
And then the budget has to, well, the budget has to be available for inspection.
It has to be available for public inspection.
Right, that doesn't mean that it's hit, changed.
Yeah, but.
But we want it to be as close as possible.
I was gonna say, I would like, yeah.
Well, the thing is, is it, it can be changed after the public hearing.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the fewer changes we have to make at the public hearing, the better. Right, I mean, don't we want it pretty locked up before we get to the public hearing?
Well, we would, we would like to be in the ballpark, but I, I can't imagine, um, if we have some changes, it's not a big deal, so. Okay, we're talking seventeen?
Yeah.
So when does the budget have to be made available for public inspection if we do the seventeen?
Uh, it would have to be, excuse me, the twenty seventh of May.
That's, you're saying the tenth?
No, wait, 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 no, you're right, you're right.
Seventeenth would work for me.
Wait, wait, hold on one second, seventeen. Okay, it was, that would be the sentence, the one on June tenth, June tenth would be a week prior. Yeah, so we'd back it up, so it would be the twenty seventh of May, this one would be.
Even if we do the public hearing on the seventeenth?
Yes, the tenth needs to be moved up.
What do you mean?
I don't get it, okay.
Hold on.
So if we do it on the tenth, May twenty seventh is not the right date? Okay, so, May twenty seventh would be the correct date for June seventeen?
Yes.
Okay. The what? Twenty seventh is when the budget would have to be done, available for inspection?
Yeah.
So you got the holiday, so that works good. I think the seventeen, the seventeenth would, would work for me.
When do you wanna do it?
The public hearing?
Regular meeting time, four thirty?
Well, are we going to have?
Well, citizen participation is the next thing I'm gonna bring up, yeah, yep.
I would say probably six for the public hearings on the budget, I think we usually have it, don't we usually have it? Cause it's usually after our council meeting.
Yeah.
So it's closer to six than it is.
Before the council meeting.
Oh, was it before?
That's been before the council meeting, all the public hearings when we have, all this before, we go into the regular meeting after that.
Okay.
Because you have had a specific time on, under ad that you're running.
I, I think we, I, I don't know, I'd propose six o'clock, but.
I admire me.
You know what? You're talking on seventeen, right?
Yeah.
Six o'clock would work for me.
Okay, and the budget then is up by the twenty seventh?
Yeah. On the seventeenth, so.
That's a month from now.
I think we'll be, we'll be pretty good, I think we're all pretty much out of our numbers.
Yeah, sorta.
Who doesn't?
No, you just gotta squeeze them in, I mean, there are some, there are some things we don't have yet, and salaries is a big one. Salaries and how we're gonna do that is huge, that's the only thing that makes me.
We've got that, we've got fire.
Yep.
And health insurance.
Yep, well, health insurance, we can't, well, health insurance, have they published the new rates, Lisa?
No, they're still working on the health, because we're a small group.
Yeah, I know, but First Carolina Care, are they changing their rates?
I'm not, I'm waiting for them to go down.
There's some stuff that has to fall into place. And I don't know if we're doing stuff with water, in terms of the consulting thing, all, all that stuff that Central Pines says, we've gotta have that if we're gonna make some good decisions about what we're doing.
Any feedback from Central Pines?
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay, so let me just be sure I got this, budget needs to be available for review by the twenty seventh, on or by the twenty seventh. May, we've got a special council meeting, where did it go?
By the, on May eighth.
Okay, that's at two thirty in the afternoon to work nothing but budget, right?
Right.
Okay, and then we've got the public hearing scheduled for the seventeenth at six P M. That's all great, so do we wanna do citizen participation?
Yeah, I, I think we should, I don't know.
Only one of them, yeah. And do we wanna do that before the public hearing, do we wanna do that before the work session?
Oh, no, I would think we wanna do it before the public hearing.
Remember how we did it last year, we usually do it separate only.
It shouldn't be before the public, not on the same day?
No, 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 I meant before, like, on a day before.
Yeah, because you're getting participation for input before you get your preliminary, I mean, because you don't wanna make changes.
Right.
How can you call it your public hearing, it's unauthorized, so.
So it's gonna be before the twenty seventh?
Right.
Whoa, 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 before the twenty seventh of May?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the budget's not available until the twenty seventh of May.
That's why we wanna have the public hearing, so we can.
Citizen participation.
I'm sorry, citizen particip- participation.
Right, because if they have input and you wanna make changes to your preliminary before you present.
So it's gotta be before the twenty seventh?
Yeah.
I mean, it could be on the twenty fifth, you know?
Right.
Cause we'd be basically.
Okay, so then now, let's follow our work session on the twenty second with citizen participation.
Say that again?
Well, we have a work, oh, no, our.
Our work session is the twenty ninth.
Hold on, I just got it wrong, please.
How about, um?
Well, let me ask a question, um. So we couldn't really do it after the work session on the twenty ninth?
No. No, no, it has to be done before the twenty seventh, cause we have to have it available, why don't we do it on the twenty second?
Twenty fifth, yeah.
Of May.
What time?
Well, citizen participation, I guess, six.
Mayors, I mentioned, you don't even have to have a form, this is just a. So if not everybody can make it.
Okay.
Yeah.
For citizen participation. So, May twenty second, six o'clock? You okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
And these will all be announced on the website?
Well, these are six.
Mm-hmm.
And usually that's what, um?
Okay, are we?
Alright, so let's, what are your business?
We have a meeting, a special meeting on May eighth at two thirty, that's for budget. We have a citizens' participation meeting, five twenty two, at six o'clock. And we have a public hearing on six seventeen, at six o'clock. For the budget. And changes can be made up to and including this public hearing and after the public hearing. After the public hearing, for the budget, yeah.
I just would like to do as few of those as possible.
I agree. Well, the more we look at it, the less likely, but there will be changes, so. Okay. So, are, is that it for you, Mary?
Yeah, that's all I got.
Okay. Moving on to the next item, um, update on water?
Uh, yeah, normally I would do this at the, uh, next council session, and not a work session, but, um, it'll be absent. So I just wanna make, mention again the importance of water conservation. Remind our residents that, you know, water conservation is the practice of water, using water efficiently. So you do sense of unnecessary water usage in place. Lisa and I have been working on a, an ordinance, and probably at the next council meeting, we'll go on the ordinance and put the conservation ordinance in place, when it does it, um, we're updating the ordinance to reflect the most current water shortage planning and thought that we stayed back in twenty twenty three. Uh, there were some inconsistencies last year, we went through, uh, a couple of months of restrictions, I could say. Again, I wanna stress conservation, if, uh, we get the cooperation of the residents, hopefully that, uh, we won't be looking at restrictions this summer. Uh, that's all I have to say on conservation at this time, I, I wanna add one more thing, I've got some, uh, messages that I put together, I'm gonna share them with, uh, Lisa, maybe put them on the website, attach it to the, uh, the water billing. Just kinda reminding people to, uh, conserve, uh, you can make copies for, uh, the rest of the, uh, members, if they like to take a look at it before we, uh, send them out, it'll be available. Uh, just a couple of operational things, um, we had, uh, the well pump on number four, the well site went out April ninth. Two words out, the next day they pulled the pump, the construction team pulled the pump, replaced the pump, and by that weekend, we have the pump back on, the well back online. During that period of time, of course, once you replace the, the well pump, we have to do bacteria tests run, and then also, uh, the well has to sit after it's disinfected, so I wanna mention that. Just another minor thing, Jesse completed the installation of a monitoring recording device at the elevator in the tank. And it's currently gathering information about our water system. Uh, the device enables him to know about the flow patterns of water into and out of the tank, and, uh, so it gives us an idea of how rapidly the tank can be drawn down, how long it takes to, for the tank to recover. Some other useful information is how frequently you fill that tank during the day. Again, all this information is gonna assist in setting optimal operating limits, so when the pump will kick on, when the well pump will kickoff, so that's, uh, to take that on himself, I think he can manage before that. That's about it, if anybody has any other questions about what's going on.
I have a question.
Sure.
I thought we were gonna discuss, uh, any pools that were being installed, if they were, if you truck in water, were we gonna discuss that?
That would be part of, uh, uh, different, well, that would be part of the conservation ordinance to work on. We can discuss it, now's a good time, we have, the mayor wants to discuss it.
Um, well, it is a different item, um, we could discuss it briefly, but I think we've discussed it in. While we're at the council meeting.
Well, this is more a work session, I think, if we can discuss something, I'd rather get it up the work session.
Yeah, it is a work session.
The work session happens before, my, my feelings are, it's a service that, if, if the water's available, or not under restrictions, and the water's available, I think the service to our customer, the service to the residents here, that they can fill pools using the village water system.
That's a lot of ifs and that, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
There's a lot of ifs and that.
And then it, who determines?
And what happens if we're in restrictions and then they choose to ignore whatever we put in place?
Well, if we're in restrictions and they're using water, and they, and the mandate is that they're not using water to fill pools, that's part of those restrictions, then we address that in enforcement.
Oh, okay, before or after they fill up the pool?
Yeah.
Well, you're not gonna know until.
Well, that's the problem. And the whole thing is, is how do you prove that they filled up the pool?
Okay, I, I've been thinking about this.
Okay.
When they come to get a pool permit, we need a sheet that clearly explains, you're responsible for filling your pool, not using the village water system.
Yep.
And they put down a deposit. Well, I'm just, I'm just gonna tell you, and then they get their money back when they bring us the receipt from the company that tanked the water in. I don't know if that part's legal.
Well, tougher audit, because that's a bookkeeping thing too, with keeping deposits, that, well, we used to do that for tap on, for contract fees, that was a nightmare, and he said, do it with you.
Well, there has to be some way to enforce it, and if somebody does it underwater restrictions, that's, needs to be like a heavy, that needs to be a fine that hurts. Yeah, cause we can't do on that.
The, the fine structures in the ordinance, and it's in the water shortage planning file of the state, so it tells you exactly.
Does it address filling pools, though?
Not specifically, that I, but.
Pools, I think, are a separate, I think they're a separate issue.
Yep.
It's a different, we, I mean, people have to get a permit, so we're not surprised when somebody puts a pool in because they had to get the permit.
Yeah.
And so maybe there's some kinda check we can put in the process? But there has to be a significant penalty, if you're not supposed to fill a pool from the, from this Foxfire water system, and you fill it, it needs to hurt.
Well, I think you have a good point there as far as the. Well, I think you have a good point there as far as the deposits, and I think what we can do is we can ask the auditor, because I know there are certain, certain ways you have to manage deposits, um, and so there are just, we just need to find out what those facts are.
Can I ask a different question, Lisa, is there, are there places in that swimming pool installation where there is any kind of a permit check, like a fence check, you know, that, all that kind of stuff?
That's all working on the environmental cap. They're, they're, in fact, they, they do all that, we don't.
You know, here's the thing, you're talking hundreds of pools.
Yeah, we're not.
We're talking a handful.
Mm-hmm.
If, or two handfuls in a summer, I can't imagine we have ten pools going in a summer.
What do you do about people that drain the pools?
We don't know that, or even...
Well, we don't know that.
Right.
The thing is, is we don't know that, but at least we've got, you know, it after they, we see their water bills. Yeah, but, again, you can't prove that they filled their, they could be watering their lawn.
About lawn leaks.
Okay. Or they have a leak, you know? So you can't prove anything, so I think, um, I do believe we do need to put something in place.
Wow.
Let's check on the deposits and see if that's something that can be managed easily, um, without being overly complicated.
Well, you know, one of the other reasons for letting residents use the village water system to build pools is that, again, when they come in for a permit to build a pool, if they've got a notification that it's time to fill the pool, that they have to notify the village. By notifying us, if there's something going on in the system, you know, we, at least we have a, a relationship or a forefile, you know, if they're doing it, they're aware that we have a problem. So if, if they're trucking it in, and they decide they're not going to pay to have it trucked in, they want to use the system, and they use the system, we have a break, uh, our tanks are low, our tank is low, we have a well out of service, they jeopardize our system, we're not aware, we're out there looking, trying to figure what's going on. But if we have a working relationship with them, we know when they're going to fill the pool, maybe, uh, we, uh, set hours that they fill a pool for it.
But who's going to, who's going to monitor that?
How many pools do you think we have in our system? I mean, we have maybe two, three new pools a year, right? So we're not talking a lot.
We got, we got to do it tomorrow.
A year?
Yeah, yeah, they, they, I'm going to talk tonight, um...
Yeah, I just think from the, from the operator standpoint out there with Jesse, I think he'd rather know what's going on in the system than have someone, you know, again, take a large amount of water without knowing, because he's actually going to be out there looking for a leak or something.
But they're going to do that anyway. Not everyone's going to follow the rule because it says, oh, call us before you fill your pool.
I think they would.
That ain't gonna happen.
Here's, here's the thing, I think you all are right now.
I think we should have, where they have to use outside water to fill their pool, that's the only way you're going to conserve any water.
Because once they, the water, what's going on?
They're going to be honest about it.
Be honest with them, yeah.
If you want to conserve water, you're going to have to...
And I still think Mary's ideas, um, I mean, that's probably the easiest way to manage it, is to have them put a deposit down, um, equal to...
We just, we hold it, we don't cash it, I mean, we hold it.
Yeah. Uh, no, we would cash it, and then we would give it back. Equal to the amount approximately that we've, that it costs to fill your pool.
Well, we did, we don't know what the gallons are, just like estimated.
Well, then you estimate it, and you give...
Well, I'm not going to estimate it.
No, no, I'm just saying, we decide, you know, I don't know, twenty thousand gallons in a pool, call up, find out what that would cost. So we don't, when the, the pool permit, don't they, we, do, do they, do we request the size of the pool?
We, no, as long as it needs a setback, and it's within, yeah, that's the old county, um, they're the ones that come out.
But you can take a nap, and weigh the cost. Well, obviously, we need to get more facts before we make decisions on this, but I think, um, a proposal, we, we need to come up with a proposal, and we need to check the details of your suggestion.
I'll, 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 but Lisa, is it feasible, though, at least, like, when they come and get the pool permit, we could give them something that says, this is the procedure for filling your pool, you know, we, we could give them something, right?
This should be established in the ordinance, yeah, that's enforceable.
Yeah, exactly, but then what I'm saying is, when they come to get the permit, you give them a little cheat sheet that says, hey, so they're, so they're not, so they're aware that this is our pool filling policy.
Right.
That would help, too, because then you can't say, I didn't get it.
So Lisa, rather than incorporate that into the water ordinance that you and I have been working on, wouldn't we just amend the general utility ordinance, the water utility order, put a paragraph in there, again, council agrees to it, that we no longer, yeah, we no longer commit filling pools from the, from the system.
Yeah, it would just be in the, the general...
Okay, so that's nothing we have to look at right now, that's just something we want to amend to the, the utility ordinance.
And you get all these changes on your ordinance, too, that would require a public hearing, if you want to do something like on, you know...
Under pools.
Under pools.
Okay.
Under the village code, that's enforceable by the place where they define, with us, it's all variance and that kind of stuff, so, a bit more.
Well, I think we need to make a decision on this sooner rather than later. Oh, I agree, especially as our...
I, I better talk, you better let me talk to the auditor first.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right, so maybe our next council meeting, we make a decision.
Yeah.
I have, if we're done with that, I have a question for Dawn.
Okay.
Uh, well, number four?
Yep.
Probably ought to talk to me about the money.
Okay.
Because we, I mean, do we know how much it costs, or, um...
You mean, the, the reason being that's on it? Uh, no, you're not, not at this time, I said that was an emergency, uh, so come out and continue, probably, but...
Yeah, you probably get with me on cost, and you got it.
Yeah, I don't do that.
That's going to be a place you...
Not really, well, no, it's the, you know, the, because it came out of its time and cost the, the well pump itself. In fact, the well's already there and everything, it's just, it's just a major cost that, okay? All right.
Any further questions for councilman?
That's all I have on the water right now.
Okay, all right. Well, with that, uh, we move on to a couple of comments, and these would be public comments from the audience on items that are listed on the agenda.
What's the time allotted? I'm just curious, what's the time allotted?
Uh, three minutes.
Three minutes.
Per deed?
Yes, per speaker.
Per deed? Per landowner?
Per, per speaker.
Per speaker.
But what if we owned more deeds?
It'll be, it'll be the same, it's three minutes per speaker. Is she discussing what we are discussing, what sits on her, or is it per speaker? Well, we, we discussed, we, we did discuss Foxfire Boulevard.
Okay.
So... So our public comment, um, rules are, every minute per speaker. Each speaker is allotted three minutes, so please come, whoever has comments, come up and state your name and address.
My name's Kevin Poole, I live at Three Wildwood Lane. I've been a resident here for five years, I've been coming down here since I was a little kid. I'm a current board member of both Building C and Building A. At this time, we have asked Connie Bimberetti to the late owner of Becky Connor, which I'm sure you all know, to, uh, go ahead and read a statement before the other owners do.
Yes, thanks, Kevin, um, in case you need a couple of minutes, my name's Connie Bimberetti, owner of one duplex and three others that I inherited from my mother as an inheritance gift to my sons. Could, could you spell your last name, please? B H I M I R E D D Y, B H I M I R E D D Y. I think, uh, thank you, give me a copy of it, sure. Sure, I can just, yeah, put that right in there, that'd be great. Uh, Ms. Lydia Conner as well, has, um, been so gracious as to print out the, um...
Do you want these out now, or the six o'clock?
No, this will be for the other meeting, if it's anything, if, we're just talking about what was discussed in this meeting today, I mean, so far, today's.
That's relevant to Foxfire Boulevard.
Which is going to be discussed at six o'clock.
And was also discussed today, but the agenda at six o'clock on the town website says, your public comment will be accepted?
Yeah.
Even though that's the time that was given in our...
But there were, there were questions that you can answer, ask at that, at that meeting, yes? I believe the letter that was sent out saying that it was going to be, any questions, um, regarding the parking change that we encourage you to, to spend, to attend a special meeting?
And then on April twenty-second, just two days ago, time was changed, and it was added that we aren't allowed to comment.
No, the time was not changed.
It's always been six P M.
Six P M, but that we're not allowed to comment, we're not allowed to speak, so it's very confusing, seven, six o'clock.
Can I mention something, okay, that's a special meeting, and it's not, we, we don't allow a public comment section just to talk and about anything to anybody, this was a special meeting specifically to speak to the proctor owners of those affected by the parking on Foxfire Boulevard, that's, and there's dialogue.
Right, there will be dialogue.
Right, on, on, like, with this meeting, you're in public comment, that is just for a comment, a public comment, where there's no open dialogue, it's not a back and forth discussion, so that is one, everybody to get confused, so...
So for Clary, is this the meeting, then, for open discussion and dialogue?
No, that's six, six o'clock.
That was called specifically for that.
You mean, open discussion and dialogue amongst council?
Council owners and council, yes.
So there is a question and answer, and comment, period?
It's going to be, if you have questions at six o'clock?
Yes.
If you have questions, we can discuss any questions that you have at six.
So I can voice them now, and then you can address them, then?
If you, if you have public comments right now, you can voice your comments, but we will not necessarily be, we won't be responding to you in this, in this meeting right now.
Oh, gosh, I don't expect any answers, that's fine, that's fine, sorry, I forgot, Blackwood, sorry. So do you want to keep that with records? Okay.
I, I'll get on to it then.
Okay, then.
Mm-hmm.
Um, good evening, Mayor, and council members, to begin, we, the, and, uh, this might end up being longer than my three minutes, um, and another HOA member might just continue the same letter, this is a letter that, a, a, already stated that the, both HOAs collaborated, um, to have a unified stance on our understandings, um, and things like that. Um, good evening, Mayor, council members, to begin, we, the members of the HOA, have just two to three central questions for the council. Number one, is the council aware of our needed land rights to park in the median? Um, included in the purchase of our condo units is language that details the purchase of a perpetual right to park in the median between the two towns' roads. Um, we have the deeds brought with us, um, and can make them available to the council, um, for your minutes' record. Um, within the subsection of the deeds detailing the boundary lines and land description itself, the language is as follows, quote, "And in addition, the perpetual right to use Foxfire Boulevard and to park in the space provided, therefore between the lanes of Foxfire Boulevard," end quote. Becky Connor once quoted that the B B rights are as clear as the Carolina sky. Um, when I arrived at it just in two thousand and ten. A further bit of context may help explain this, um, if any newer council members are unfamiliar, from the conception of these multifamily buildings and the division into unit condo ownership, um, referenced on one of the deeds. This right to park in the median was formulated to give the land its value as residences, since the buildings are landlocked against the courses' lands. Even our septic system crosses the Eighteenth Creek, and there's nothing for that. The developers of our buildings were one of the same with the original golf course, and it was later in the late seventies that the newly-created Foxfire Village Incorporated received the responsibility of the road's maintenance and the encumbrance of our property rights to parking. This right is perpetual and runs with the land, not individual ownership. To provide a sampling of the deeds, we've also brought, um, the most recent deed to show that it goes from the inception of the land and its concept, all the way through to October two thousand and twenty-four. If the council's unaware...
Three minutes.
What was that?
Three minutes.
Okay, so, good, elementing, did you want to continue?
I don't have one, David, you want to read?
My name's David Connor, I live in San Jose, Rich and Red, I own three units, I'm a contractor, and, um... If the council's unaware of our shared right to park in the median, we hope the council votes prudently to not pursue taking our land rights from us, votes down. Number two item is that the HOAs are intending to review the documentation showing the council's specific safety concerns that this man's saw. So possibly the council's privy to action reports or property damage reports from the police department, we are not privy to, if the traffic study has been completed since the three-way home sites, three new home sites, we would like copies of the findings of that report. Since previous council of twenty-seventeen, due to case, there was no council sent then was, has expressed concern to our HOA's safety or otherwise. Yeah, so over the last month, we owners have each done our part to leave the council's meetings, review the council's meetings since twenty-seventeen, and solve multiple city concerns logged by the past two police chiefs, nor individual council members. So we request any relevant data around safety or traffic we shared with us. Thank you, and if you need to fill out a FOA, I, I request by the town's website, blah, blah, blah. All right, and then to A, if this is a new concern, we are curious to hear why helping or taking all of our property rights would be the only remedy? That's the big, hard question. We were all disheartened that the council seemed to have rushed this measure through with little or no discussion logged into the minutes' record, which we compiled here for you to, for you to, for you to talk to that. We're, we're concerned that alternative measures were not explored or given their fair shot. The council of twenty-seventeen worked together with the HOAs to gain understanding and receive feedback of their plans for the town's road. We cannot understand why the current council led to declare a plan as the only solution in its second recent motion under the book. Is there, is something severe or secret that's happening, which we are not aware of? Perhaps like vandalism or theft, current maybe, uh, that we don't know? We weren't jumping to such a radical measure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, is there more to that, or?
Do you wish to speak?
My name is Edwina Berje, I live at thirty-five, thirty-five of Four Rose and Road.
Could you spell your last name, please?
B A E R J E. While some of us live out of town, mo- almost half of us live nearby, and not of no increase in traffic on this stretch of road. No safety issues at all, from animals harmed to people harmed to warrant a right being taken away, nor have tenants reported anything even as mild as a deer strike near the median, let alone a person injured. The only concern we're aware of from tenants regarding parking is the long and deep washout in the median, which we raised to a council member in June of twenty-twenty-three, but we were denied. We were afraid to address the issue ourselves, and the median is supposed to be maintained by the village. But once it was denied, we had to act, so a local owner stepped in to volunteer their time and money to fill the area with large stones to prevent damage to our tenants' cars. The local owners have been... The local owners have been generous in their, with their time, even taking upon themselves to mow the median since the town has not maintained the bushes or controlled the weeds in their land. The only other damage we know of happening is occurring recently as of this month, with numerous dump trucks carrying roads too heavy for the exit-only road, which will cost the town dearly to repave. But if the council has done a traffic study, you will probably know of that damage actively occurring with the construction of the homes. The only other potential safety concern we can foresee is that the construction workers don't seem to know the exit-only road is a one-way, there's no signs posted. Since the road lacks traffic pattern signs and road markings saying one-way, do not enter, and so on. Since neither road is ours, we don't have the right to install such signage directing traffic. So we can, we can certainly support the town trying to as an initiative before taking our deeded right for, to parking. A common misconception is probably good to dispel here at this meeting, is that the residents of of Foxfire assume we own the median, we do not, you guys do, the city owns it. This could only, this could be because the council of twenty seventeen erected a sign in the median that says condo parking only. But my mother told me, Becky Connor, that just to dedicate the parking to us and discourage golfers during tournaments from taking our tenants' only parking option from us, that's why the sign was put on. Our understanding of our ownership is that we own portion of the golf course parking lot along the triangular northern part of our lot, which the course uses to exit the circular drive.
Oh, I'm on that, three, three minutes.
Lydia Connor, seventy-seven Richmond Road. We own a portion of the parking lot that includes the exit part, uh, and we have cooperatively worked with them, it's clear the circular drive does that, we've never had any problem with them. I realize that at some point, it soon will be. The only displeasure that I recall my mother invented, in summary, that HOA will beautification efforts by the current council. We're all for making it look nice to everybody, ourselves included and our whole community. So long as it honors our deeded rights to the median, we have a deeded right to park. Any measure passed that threatens our parking rights would be appealed as the ruling would be a pseudo judicial action and need reviewed by a judge to become lawful. But of course, after all the money being spent, we certainly hope that the village decides not to spend money on making these traffic changes or making an inlay which will be satisfying to everyone. Um, we hope a formal appeal doesn't become necessary. And that, and that, thank you very much, Connor, for.
Does that conclude the letter?
That finishes the letter, and I just wanted to say, I've, I've lived here for forty-four years, and I've seen it all down there, and I've seen it change. And in ten, uh, twenty seventeen, when the other council tried to beautify, I mean, that was what it was about, and wanted it to look nice, um, there was one way in, one way out, and the median was in the middle, and that's why they changed. They moved it over to a two-lane road, median, and then our driveway is what I have talked to previous council members, and they said, well, it was supposed to be a driveway for your condos and condo parking only. We found no paperwork where they had, we were not, never given any paperwork stating that, but that was their intent. The bushes we paid for, the, we paid to beautify, uh, planting, that's what the village asked us to do, and we did. We paid for the bushes, the village had them planted, the golf course was supposed to put a irrigation line, it was a three-way thing we were working on. They never put any irrigation, they never wanted one of those trucks, and, um, we just, and also, the median, the first median was a two-deck parking space. In other words, you could park two people in the median. So when the village turned the road, manipulated the road, we ended up with one angled parking place all the way down, is how it was envisioned it would, would end up being, so we would have enough parking places and they would be shielded by the trucks.
I'm sorry, three minutes is up, okay, thank you.
Actually, I'm kind of wondering why the council hasn't asked us for questions instead about the parking during all of the discussions since January of this year. And, um, June of twenty-three, I met with Jan about water runoff and street repair. Had a condominium, we had a bad ride going in there. She basically just said, this is your road, you take care of it, she declined to do any repairs and stuff. We do have needed parking since the buildings were built. And I'm just curious why the council hasn't come to us if they think there's a parking problem and that we could have participated in this before we received the certified letter.
Any other comments? No. That's, would be the end of the public comments, and I just do want to remind us that we do, we do still have our meeting at six o'clock where we can have, um, any questions, prefer the questions. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn this work session meeting?
I'm gonna motion.
Seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, meeting adjourned, um, five twenty-seven.